Every week, but make sure your cell phones are silenced and eliminate back as much background noise as possible. We do have some audience members tonight, possibly going to be some public comments. So to the audience members, please wait until the presentation is over if you have questions and ask to be recognized and there will be public comment section at the end of the meeting. Now, that being said, let me get a quick roll call. I'll start with planning commission members. Alex, you're here.
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
John?
Here.
And alternate Tony?
Here.
All right. Who do we have with West Rock Hill Elementary?
Hi, this is Jeff Schick with K and W Engineers representing Pen Ridge School District for the West Rock Hill Elementary School Project. I apologize, I tried to get on to the Google Meet, but I could not quite access it. So can you all hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So yes, I mean, would you like me to do a presentation or do you just have questions that we can go through? I can go through a brief synopsis of the project.
Yeah, I'll get to that. I'm just doing a roll call right now.
I apologize.
It helps with the minutes. I'm sorry, is there anyone else with West Rock Hill? Or is it just you?
Um, it's, I think it's just me at this point.
Okay. All right, how about North Penn Water?
Yes, this is Dan Preston. I am here to present on behalf of North Penn Water Authority. I think I have a couple of other folks on the call so they can introduce themselves.
Please do.
Yes, this is Tony Belida. I'm the Executive Director of the North Penn Water Authority, working with Dan on this project.
And this is Michael Kraft with Webber Craft and Shalou. I'm a attorney to the authority for this project. Thank you. And how about THP?
Hi, yeah, this is Bob Iraik. And if he's not on already, Dean will be with us shortly.
Dean is on. Dean is on. Okay. Anyone else want to chime in here for the roll call? I know we have a couple of supervisors again.
Right.
Jim Miller's here.
David Collingwood is here.
Okay, and Steve Baller, you're here?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Anybody else? Hearing none, let's keep moving. Next, first agenda item would be the approval of the March 9th minutes, meeting minutes. Any questions, concerns, corrections?
This is Alex, it looked good to me.
This is Tim, they look good to me.
They do good.
Johnny, look good to me, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second? Did somebody second it? Alex, okay, all right, so we got appropriate second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. All right, West Rock Hill, now Jeff, you can start your presentation.
Okay, gentlemen, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Again, Jeff Schick here with K and W. Thank you for your time tonight, greatly appreciate it. The project before you tonight is essentially just the stormwater site plan. And what we're, what the district is proposing is circulation and parking improvements, for the most part. That is the majority of the work. They are, they currently have 67 parking spaces on the, what I would say is the south and southwest side of their existing building. And they feel they need some additional parking, they want to try to help clean up some of their circulation patterns. They are adding a new access point off of Washington Avenue to access the parent drop-off area, which is, which actually doubles as a hard surface play area. So basically it will help separate, give further separation between vehicular traffic for the, the parent drop-off and pickup in the morning versus the bus drop-off and pickup, which is actually on the south side of the building. Those will remain the same with the only difference being the new access off of Washington will be mainly for morning drop-off and afternoon pickup. I, it is going to be a gated point of access, so that is the only time of day that that will be used. All other times, it will be, it will be, the existing access to Washington will be maintained and utilized. So they are demolishing the majority of the parking lot in those south, southwest sides of the, of the building and kind of reorganizing it, for lack of a better term, to, to make parking more efficient and to gain additional spaces. Currently, they have 67 parking spaces and after construction, they'll have 150. And this will help, you know, with keeping some, you know, traffic off of Washington Avenue, especially for larger events, you know, when, you know, during, you know, if there's a daytime event at the school, the parents, you know, come, parent, teacher conferences, things, things along those lines. So there will also be associated stormwater management improvements and landscaping improvements as well. We're here before you tonight because we were requesting a waiver of land development since we're not actually building any new building addition, no expansion to the building. This is all for circulation, parking, and some minor other, you know, pavement cleanups. So Steve Balla suggested that we go for, you know, we had asked for some waivers of stormwater management and from the subdivision and land development ordinance. And he suggested that we come before you for a waiver of, of the subdivision and land development procedure. So the waivers that are subbed to that waiver request, you know, we're asking for a waiver to a 10-foot wide planting strip between the parking bays. That's mainly in the central portion of the new parking area. That will allow easier maintenance for district staff. You know, that way they can push snow right through and there, there won't be the 10-foot landscape in between that will likely get, would have gotten torn up. So we're asking for a waiver of landscape shading requirements. However, you know, that's more of a modification in terms of, we're actually still providing all of the vegetation trees, et cetera, that's required by ordinance, but we're actually placing them at various parts of the campus and of course around the parking lot. So, and then under the stormwater management ordinance, we're asking for a waiver of pipe materials, which I believe, you know, is due to where we have some PVC pipe on the plan. And I believe it's, you know, it's either HDP or CMP required. And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong on that, or whether we're, we're asking for a waiver of, of RCP for the basin. And then we have a stormwater pipe depth waiver as well. We, we are, we'll have less than 12 inches of cover, but we believe that that is only in a, in a small amount of space and limited. And of course, you know, with this being private property, you know, private parking, you know, it's, you know, will be the maintenance responsibility of the district. So the other waiver is a minimum of, there's a waiver of the one foot of free board in the storm sewer system. We had talked that through with, with Stephen, he, I believe he felt he could agree to that based on the limited improvements here. We're also, we modified the graded access ramp into the, into the one basin per discussions with Steve as well. And we've changed the emergency spillway lining, since it's pretty limited. There was a requirement to have like those checker blocks, you know, that had, that let grass grow up in between masonry. And we're doing a, a fabric that we believe meets the same intent of that requirement. So if there's any questions about the plan or the waivers in particular, I'd be happy to try to help and answer those.
All right, well, I'll start. So I mean, I'm looking at, at a sketch plan here. I'm assuming that everything in gray is what is, that's going to be the scope of the work? Is that correct?
It depends on which sheet you're looking at, sir. If you're looking at the site layout plan, yes, the gray areas are, are areas of new paving.
Yeah, that's really all we have. We didn't get any other, any other, any other plans besides one and two here that are...
Actually, those are the truck, the truck turning movement plans, Chris?
Yeah. That, that's the only thing I've received was, but it shows the, what I assume is the new construction in gray.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, in varying levels of gray, yep.
Does, does the school still have a half-day elementary with parent pickup or like busing kids now or?
They are still busing kids now, yes.
They are, they are busing kindergarten?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. It's probably not a big deal, but I know, you know, that if that gate is closed on that new entrance, the, the midday pickup would, would use the original entrance, would that make sense?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I, I believe what, you know, whatever, you know, if they have the midday, I'm, I'm certain they'll, they'll open that for that period of time as well and then close it after that, that event is over.
Well, I mean, having been a, a parent of two students and having to pick them up at, and drop off for kindergarten, I can see how this plan will definitely ease the traffic issues at pickup and drop-off times.
And that was the goal.
Yeah. Yeah, it should have been done 20 years ago. I've got a lot more work done. Any other questions or comments from planning commission members?
Yeah, this is Alex. I'm just looking, as I recall it, basically the kids are coming out of the door where it says finished floor elevation 54823. Is there any thought to putting a gate up to separate those new parking spots and all the playground to the rear of the, the building? Where the, the pickup would basically happen through the new gate and then up through the loop and back out? Or, or vice versa, come in at the top of the loop and then go back out? It just seems to me, especially if you're doing it midday, it makes sense to isolate traffic from the playground to the rear of that?
Um, I'm not certain I, I understand. I apologize, I'm trying to under, which, which door, you're saying that...
No problem. I'm saying that if, if the kids are coming out of the door where it says finished floor elevation 548.23...
Okay.
Kind of the one closest to the, the walkway closest to the new entrance.
Right.
Would it make sense to put a gate between the new entrance and a new proposed parking at the top right corner of the plan? So that cars couldn't drive back to where there's additional playground?
Well, actually what they do in the morning, the, the traffic is such that they actually come in and they actually, they go all the way up through that hard surface play area and they work their way around in a, in a counterclockwise manner.
Right.
To, to get all the cars off the street. So what they, you know, that way they can stack as many cars in the site before it comes down to that loop that, you know, that is just below, you know, to, towards the bottom of the page of, from 54823. And then the cars can, you know, they'll, they, they can loop through there with, at the pickup and or drop-off and then head back out. So they use that entire, shall I say, south, you know, easternmost hard surface play area for the, the, um, the parent drop-off and pickup.
Now, I understand, unlike Chris, both of my kids went to this school as well. What, what I was suggesting was for the midday kindergarten pickup and drop-off, would it make sense to be able to block that, that rear area off from the, the front area so that the kindergarten kids can be picked up and dropped off without impacting that play area in the back?
I see what you're saying now, yes. I, I, I understand that. I mean, we could certainly take that to the district to see. I know that Kelly Harper had, I don't know if he's on the line, he was going to try to be on the call tonight, but I mean, I could take that to them. We've actually already bid the project, we actually just got bid yesterday, but that's something that, you know, we can, you know, we can consider.
As I said, just a thought, because I figured that would allow the school to continue to use that play area in the rear without having to worry about cars coming back there.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a fine idea, so.
Might be able to handle with a crossing guard of sorts to direct traffic. You got anything else, Alex?
That's it, I think.
All right, any other planning commission members have comment or question? All right, hearing none. I mean, is it, is it necessary to go through the whole engineering letter here?
Let, let me just, Chris, if I may...
Please do.
Just clarify, clarify where, where we are. I think Jeff gave a pretty good overview. But in, in general, this started out as, as a stormwater management review, really, with the township, because there's no new structures on the plan, so technically it's not, it doesn't fall into land, land development category. So we worked out essentially all of the engineering issues through that stormwater management review process. And what they're doing is a large retrofit, we'll call it, to the front basin, the basin that's just to the left of the main entrance. Some people might not even notice that it's there, it's a very, very shallow grass basin. And that's going to be enlarged and, and turned into a more modern stormwater management facility, but still discharges to the same pipe and, and at the same rate that it, that it does today. The bigger parking lot is hence why the, the, the storage is bigger, so they could get that same rate discharge. But through the process of the engineering design, they identified these handful of waiver request issues, most of them having to do with the stormwater management ordinance, which I don't object to any of the, the issues they're, they're requesting. And then there was sort of modifications of this, of the tree plantings where they, because of not having a lot of islands in the parking lot, they can't fit them all in the parking lot, but they're willing to plant them on the, on the property. When we talked about the situation here with the, with staff, with, you know, Greg with the manager and Mary Everly, the solicitor, what was determined was the cleanest way to get this in front of the township to approve the waiver request was to call it a waiver of land development and sort of package it all together and, and, and run it through the process so the planning commission would have the opportunity to comment on it if they had any comments. Same thing with the board of supervisors and then the waiver land development approval would, you know, wrap up all these little odds and ends of, of waiver requests. So that's what is summarized in my March 26th letter. This is sort of the, the culmination of all the engineering review and design that we've done over the last, the last couple of months. And it's just essentially itemizes those waiver issues that Jeff just went over and mentions, you know, it would still need a stormwater management agreement and some escrow funds to guarantee that the stormwater management facilities will be constructed per the plan. So I was a long way to say, no, I don't think we need to go through my March 26th letter unless someone had a specific question about the, about the design.
I do not have any questions on the design.
This is Alex, I don't have any questions.
This is Tim, I do not have any questions either.
Don't have any questions? Andy, did you say you had no questions? I'm sorry.
No questions.
All right. So are we all comfortable with approving the, the waiver request? And can we do this as, as just a blanket approval or recommend?
Yeah, you'd just be recommending waiver land development submission and per this March, March 20th, reference to March 26th letter, my review, and that would be fine.
All right, and then that, that covers all of the internal requests here?
Correct.
Okay. All right, somebody want to make that motion? Besides Steve?
John, I'll make the motion.
Excuse me one second. Sorry. Can I get a second?
This is Andy, I'll second. Andy, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the waiver request recommendation has been approved, I guess. What else we need to do to clean this up, Steve?
Uh, that would be it. And I think we've already let Jeff know that this will be placed on the board of supervisors' agenda next Wednesday for the board to consider.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Have a good evening, appreciate your time.
All right, thanks.
Jim Miller, could I, again, Steve? Real quick?
What's that?
Could I add something real quick? This is Jim Miller.
Sure.
About six years ago, I gave the school permission to use the Holiday House pool parking lot for their overflow. If during your project you need additional staff parking, you have, you, you can use that across the street. It's a, it's a good way to keep cars out of the parking lot for your construction period.
That would be awesome. Yeah, we're hoping to complete the work before school, you know, over the summer, you know, before school opens, but I'll certainly pass that along to the district. Is there someone, should they reach out to you?
Yeah, just reach out to me, Jim Miller. Because they, they currently, for their, you know, muffins for mom and donuts for dad day and stuff like that, so I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with them using it for the construction period.
That would be greatly appreciated, Jim. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thanks again. All right, bye.
All right. So next on the agenda is North Penn Water. I lost my agenda. So somebody want to give us an overview from North Penn Water?
I do have a presentation to give, I'll, I'll get, Jeff has, I mean, excuse me, Greg has given me the present now, so I am going to take advantage of that.
Okay. And you are Dan?
I'm Dan, yes.
Go ahead, Dan, thank you.
I am hitting to present now. Oh Greg, I'm sharing my own screen on this. Greg? Is Greg there? Hello Greg? Can you guys hear me?
I think Greg's off the call, but Sherry's handling the presentation, so she should be able to...
Okay, it's, okay. Just give me, bear with me for a second because I thought it would be similar to the last meeting where it was run through the township website, so I, I need to bring that up, which I can do in two seconds here, hold on for a second. Apologize for the delay. Fortunately, I brought the presentation home with me because I'm currently at home and I can share that screen with you. It's the same presentation given to Greg. Okay, let's try this again. Okay, window, here we go. Sorry, I got thrown a curveball here, sorry about that.
There, Tom.
So I'm trying to open up the power, I have the PowerPoint open, but it's not recognizing the screen.
I can present it, but I cannot get it in full screen mode, if you'd like me to do it that way.
Let me give it one more shot here and see if I can get this done. Can you guys see that?
Yeah, that came up, Dan.
Oh great, thank, thank goodness. Okay. So you know, my name's Dan, who am I? My name's Dan Preston, I'm a professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I've been in the water utility business for 35 years, I started when I was 10. I'm a chief engineering and operations officer for the last 21-plus years for North Penn Water Authority. I consider myself a public servant, just like you folks do as well, a former planning commission member for Skippeck Township, so understand your issues and concerns with, with development within the township and, and I, I consider this project to be something that would be, something that we can really align with, so let's see how that goes. Some of you may not be entirely familiar with North Penn Water Authority, we serve a small portion of West Rock Hill Township. We are a municipal, regional provider, we serve a population of almost 100,000 in 19 municipalities in Bucks and Montgomery County, and we've been providing water service to Sellersville Borough and West Rock Hill Township since 2011, which is when we purchased the Sellersville Borough water system. I like to note that we're an award-winning water facility, we're nationally recognized for our water treatment plant and also our water distribution system. We really take seriously providing the best possible service to all the municipalities we serve, and that's a big reason for this project. So let me continue. So this is our service area, as you can see up in the northern part of this slide near Sellersville Borough and West Real Township, we serve a relatively small part of West Rock, Rock Hill Township, but an important part, it's really in the institutional area, in the Grandview Hospital and where medical professional buildings are, West Rock Hill Elementary and some other facilities. So it's an important part of the township that we serve. So why are we here? We're going to talk about that and also I'll give you an overview of the project's scope, why we think this is a real benefit to West Rock Hill Township. I'll go over some of the project background and details, and of course land use considerations, which is always important from a planning commission standpoint, and then I'll summarize things and that will open it up then for Q and A. So why are we here? Well, I'm here to demonstrate a public safety need. Fire protection, of course, is very important in our institutional area. When we took over the Sellersville Water System, there was a lot of needs, and this is one that's still out there and we want to get it taken care of. So we're going to present a proposal, as you know, to construct a water storage tank on the township property, and we'll go over some of the details of that and why we think it benefits the township, of course, again. But, and important, very importantly, we're seeking planning commission feedback on our proposal. We obviously here to, to serve the township, but also to meet township needs and address any issues or concerns you may have with the project. So the project's scope, we're constructing up to a 500,000 gallon elevated water storage tank on township property. And in order to fully utilize this to the benefit of the township and, and the community that we serve here is to construct a two and three quarter, almost a three miles of 12-inch water main, and that would run from Tyler's Port in Montgomery County down Ridge Road to the Grandview Hospital area. We also need to make some other modifications to our existing booster stations to orchestrate this operational change to the system. So this gives you an overview of the project's scope, this is in the application package, shows the connection of the water line and county line road in Tyler's Port, past the quarry down Ridge Road to the municipal township property where the proposed water storage tank would be located, down Augustine Road, back out to Ridge Road, down Almont Road, 309, under the 309 bypass here, we are boring, and then tying in in the Grandview Hospital area in the other side of North Penn Water System. So the benefits to West Rock Hill would greatly improve fire protection to this area of West Rock Hill Township with the addition of fire hydrants along this entire route and also the, the fire reserve storage in the tank, which is there primarily to provide the proper fire protection to the institutional area in West Rock Hill. Now, keep in mind that a, a public water system is not just there to provide safe, high-quality drinking water to its customers, but it also serves a dual purpose as a public fire protection system, and this is a very, very important point. Also, it does potentially provide some relief to property owners with failing or compromised wells who, along this route, who may have a desire to improve their, their own water supply to their home or business. It also enhances domestic water quality due to this transmission main, and also provides that fire service to that institutional area that I was talking about, Grandview Hospital, and I'm going to bring up the sketch plan in a minute and I'll go over that a little bit in more detail. But since 2011, we are really have been dedicated ourselves to improving water service and fire protection to this system. We've invested $7.3 million in infrastructure improvements into the Sellersville Water System, which includes the West Rock Hill portion. So that's $730,000 a year, so this is a commitment that we continue to maintain and we've continued to address and improve the various issues in the system. And that brings us to the engineering study, we still... And that brings us to the engineering study. We still have a big project, maybe the last significant project that we need to do to bring the, the system into world-class water service. And that is, an engineering study was completed, which showed that there was system deficiencies in our West Rock Hill system, and that is because of fire flow and the, the fire flow needs of this particular area. So various engineering analyses were done. This is a hydraulic model of our system. I'm going to blow this area up here because this is the West Rock Hill Township area that I'm talking about. And what you'll see is, you may on your computer scenes, depending on the size of your screen, see these little red dots. You like to use red to show bad. And then what's, what's that telling us is that there's not adequate fire flow. So as I mentioned, you have the Grandview Outpatient Center here. You've got the West Rock Hill Elementary, Penn Foundation facilities here, retirement communities, Hidden Meadows on the Ridge is out here, and a proposed expansion of that area for retirement here. You have the Grandview Hospital, of course, here, and various medical and professional buildings here. All of these in need of additional fire flow. So a little background on this project. The, the study revealed that a water storage tank was recommended. It was definitely the most cost-effective, effective option really to, to meet the needs and get the, the fire flow. Really, it was, there was really no other alternative I can say that really met all the criteria that we're trying to accomplish here and provide the service levels to this area. We did extensive site analysis because the study identified that we had the need, but we needed to find an appropriate site. Now, citing a water storage tank can be tricky. Obviously, it's not something that anybody wants in their backyard. And also, we need to have certain criteria related to the site location. There needs to be a high elevation. It needs to be close to the need. And so we did some extensive analysis of that. And the township property on Ridge Road really came to the surface as the optimal site. And so, and I'm, I'm going to explain to you in a minute why we believe that to be the case. But we also needed to do, to do diligence of that site to confirm that this site is suitable to construct a water storage tank. There's a lot of things that go into this. A lot of sites look promising at first, and then you do some due diligence and find that that's not the case. But in this case, the due diligence turned out very favorably. So here's the sketch plan that was submitted with the application package. And in order to utilize this site, we would run water lines. And I'm aware of, of course, Steve's comments as the township engineer on the location of a water line and where, what would be optimal for that. That's, could certainly be worked out. But this is the, the proposed location of the tank between the West Rock Hill Township building and the maintenance building here. To the south, we have a 180-foot cell tower. We have proposed solar panels directly behind the township building. And then we also have the power lines, the PP&amp;L power lines that run across the property as well. The tank design, the type is a spheroid, and I'm going to give you some graphical depictions of what that would look like. The material would be carbon steel, 100% carbon steel. The, the tank would be up to 500,000 gallons capacity. We're looking at this point to probably go to that higher capacity. So based on that, the diameter of the bowl would be 55 feet at that higher capacity. And the height would be approximately 144 feet, which is the height that we need to build this tank in order to provide the appropriate pressure and instantaneous fire flow for this type of tank, which is elevated water storage. Our preliminary analysis, what we did for due diligence, we did a ground penetrating radar survey because we wanted to make sure that we don't start building a tank and find there's things in the way in the ground. So we did some, a ground penetrating radar survey will be able to do that for you without having to go and dig things up. But we also did dig things up just to make sure that there weren't any issues. But we did find underground facilities that just weren't in the proposed location, and we did show those on the sketch plan. We also consulted with three tank manufacturers on potential construction issues. The primary issue here would be it's, it's in close proximity to a, to a cell tower. And of course, we have the two buildings nearby. Now, let me point out that we've constructed three tanks in the last seven years, and we've dealt with all of these issues, near cell towers, near buildings, near power lines. So we were familiar with all these issues. So we had a lot of confidence going into it. And the tank manufacturers confirmed there would not be any potential construction issues. Next thing we did was we connected a shadow analysis. We were aware of the proposed solar panel project. So we did a shadow analysis, determining where is this tank going to cast a shadow? If it's going to cast a shadow for long lengths of time, then it's going to really affect the performance of the shadow, of the panels. So we wanted to make sure the solar panels' performance was not impacted by this tank, and that shadow analysis proved successful. We contacted the cell tower owner, made sure that they didn't have any issues with the tank. Got good news for you on that. Their, their lowest antenna facility is about 140 feet off the ground. And we gave them all the parameters and a copy of the sketch plan, and they indicated they did not see any issues with the performance of the cell tower and this tank. So that was good news. So here's that shadow analysis I was telling you about. Over here, where my cursor is, is the proposed solar panels. So you can see where this tank would cast a shadow has no impact whatsoever on those panels. So let's talk land use considerations, obviously a very important topic for the planning commission. And property restrictions, this was in the application package. There are some restrictions across the property. There is the right-of-way for Verizon and PP&amp;L across the property, and also, of course, various documents related to the lease agreement with American Tower, who owns and operates the, the cell tower. Surrounding area land use, we're looking at government and institutional use for the municipal township property. So it's a municipal use and also a significant use for other utilities on the site. We are municipal authority. This is a municipal project. We're also a utility. So we feel that we're pretty good complementary use for what the existing uses of the property. Current zoning is Village Center, which is mentioned, of course, in, in Steve Ballow's review letter. And that's where we're at. We don't see any issues with being in Village Center. We are permitted use. Land use compatibility, as I mentioned, proposed use is a municipal use of a water storage tank. So it is, it is really a good fit for this particular property because it's used in a similar fashion already. The current use includes other utilities, and they're all there for the public benefit. This is clearly a project for the, the public benefit and, and only for the public benefit and for existing customers in the water system. It's primarily a passive use similar to the cell tower. So it has very little impact on actual land use, although the tank itself will have a visual impact on the community. From a land use perspective, the, the, the impact is very minimal, really. So that's why we asked for a land development waiver, a full land development waiver for the project. Not that we're looking to circumvent township review and feedback on the process, not so ever, not, not, not at all, actually. It just isn't warranted for this project. Our three tanks that we've built in the last six years all had land development waiver approved for the project. So we, we feel it's a, it's a reasonable request. There's no new curb cots, our large parking lots planned, there's no stormwater impact. There's no traffic impact to the community. Yes, we'll be visiting the site two to three times per week, but we already have a truck driving down Ridge Road during that time, and it would just be worked into the, to the root of that system operator. So there's really no impact at all in that regard. And that's a relatively small footprint of construction. We're not expecting to have any issues with soil conservation, stormwater management, nothing like that. It's just not a development at all. It truly is a municipal project, and it's there to serve one benefit, and that's for the community only. So what will it look like? Well, we looked at some various perspectives of the tank from various locations. The top location over here is from the Township Park. We have a northeast perspective from, from this field here that the township owns from behind the property. And then from Augustine Road, where we do have some, some residential homeowners. We wanted to see what it looked like from that, from that perspective. So this is from the Township Park, and this is what the tank would look like. Now, it doesn't have to be a blue color like this. It could be any color you want it to be. And also, I'll, I'll show you an example in a minute of a recent, of the recent project we completed last year, where we utilized a municipal logo on the tank, so we can make it a source of civic and community pride. And this is from that northeastern perspective. As you can see, because of the tank being in the foreground, the cell tower being in the background and the lower elevation, it appears that the cell tower is much higher than the, than the tank. It's 40 feet higher, but it, the illusion is that it is much higher than that, but it's not. This is from Augustine Road. This time, the tank's in the foreground. It looks higher compared to the cell tower. But again, it's just a matter of perspective. You can also see the, the power lines in this particular perspective there as well. And there's the maintenance building for the township. In the background, you can barely make out, but there's the municipal building there as well. So I wanted to also show you a similar tank. We just placed in operation in November of 2020 with great support from the community and also a lot of accolades as well. They were very pleased with how it turned out. And this is the tank I was just talking about. We put the Lansdale logo on there. This is a tank that was constructed in Lansdale Borough last year, went into service in November. And very similar to what we're proposing here, in this case, painted the Lansdale logo on it. You can see from this picture that this is in a neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. On this side of the tank, we, we painted our logo on it. You can see, we can make it look very professional, very, again, a source of, of community pride. And it was very well received by the community, as I mentioned. This, I just wanted to show you this because this is before we painted the tank. But you can see how close our neighbor is to this property. This is a residential neighborhood. So building tanks next to structures is not unusual, and it's done very frequently. And, and it's, we do our best to make it blend in and be a source. You're not going to hide it, obviously, but you can also make it a source of community pride. So we try to do that. So in summary, I just wanted to say that this benefits the community, and it has their significant improvements to public safety and fire protection. As I mentioned, we're a fire, part of the fire protection system for the community. Fire companies, of course, would certainly welcome this type of fire flow improvements in this area, especially in that institutional area. They would certainly welcome it. As I mentioned, improve water quality to our West Rock Hill Township customers. We'd be getting water directly from our main system into West Rock Hill. And this would be our highest water quality that we could provide to West Rock Hill. And it's consistent with the current use of the property, as I mentioned, municipal use, utility use. That's what we are. We're a municipal authority that, that provides a utility service. And I think a land development waiver is warranted for this project based on my experience in dealing with past projects like this. And it's really due to the minimal land use impact that it has to the community and really the fact that it's a passive use. And that really concludes my presentation. So I'm ready, at this point, to thank you for your time and, and take the first question. So who has the first question?
Well, I'll take that one. Couple of things. You mentioned water hookup capability or possibilities for failing wells and whatnot along the, the course of the, the main. Now, we obviously have some water issues coming in from the area of, of Naismith Quarry. Now, that, that is not your service area, correct?
No, that's, that, that's correct. That would be anything south of Ridge Road and that area, south of the quarry, would be Telford Borough Authority.
Okay, so has there been any discussion with Telford about the, the possibility of that happening?
Uh, yeah, yes, there has. I, I've discussed this with Telford Borough Authority as well as Percocie Regional Authority. They, they are in favor of the project. They, they see how this could benefit them and the township. Any customers, any, say, for instance, someone would want to hook up to that line. What I would suggest is we do it similar to Telford Township, where they need to ask permission from the township in order to, to, to have water service provided. And then in discussions with Telford, what we would do is make them a, a Telford customer. So Telford would just buy the water off of us, and they would become a Telford Borough Authority customer. It's very important to the other authorities that are involved in West Rock Hill Township that we not infringe upon their service area. We have no desire to do so. If anything, if we can help them and work together cooperatively, that's, that's certainly a goal that we, that we have.
Okay, and I mean, you mentioned failing septic. How can, how can a failing septic benefit from running this, running this line?
The, the assumption is that if someone has a failing septic, they also have their own well because there's no public water sewer in the village of Almont, for instance. So if they have a failing septic, it could be compromising the water quality in the well just due to the proximity. So one way, the failing septic is a problem in and of, of itself. But the important thing is that someone has a safe drinking water supply, and it's not contaminated in any way. So we, we would be able to present an option to them to do that, whether they end up as a Percocie customer, a Telford customer, North Penn customer. It, it really doesn't matter to us, just as, as long as we serve the public good in this case.
Is there public sewer out at County Line and Ridge Road?
There is public sewer that terminates at County Line Road. When we ran water into Tyler's Port, it was really a WB Homes project at the time. The, the, the main was designated as a transmission main only, getting to the, to the development. And then the, the way the township ordinance works is that if someone has frontage on the property, on, on the trans, on the water main, excuse me, they need to first contact the township and request permission to tie into the line. So we don't tie anybody in without permission from the township first.
Well, the reason I was asking where the, where the sewer would terminate, I mean, you're opening up Ridge Road to run water. I mean, has there been any discussion about? I mean, I know it's a big ball of wax, but has there been any discussion about continuing sewer line?
No, none whatsoever. This, we're a water authority only, and there's been no discussion and no plans to extend sewer at all down Ridge Road.
All right. Can you, can you place antennas on the water tower?
We could, but we don't have to. You already have a cell tower on site. And as, as part of an agreement with the township, to get permission to build the water tower, we, we would agree to not compete with the township in any way for water, for antenna revenue. So it's, it's fine for us to build a tank and, and, and not, anybody would contact us to put an antenna. We just forward them right to the township.
Okay. I mean, is that, does that tower have room for more antenna? I mean, is it something that they're built out on and could possibly, the water tower could take antenna?
That I don't know. That would be a question for American Tower. I'm not sure if they have additional capacity on there.
Now, how about the land that you want to put this on? Is this, I mean, who's, is it going to remain under the same ownership in your LSC? Are you looking for it right away, or?
Well, two ideas have been floated. Either we go with a perpetual easement on the site or we, we do a lease. I, I think the, and we're, we're working with staff on that, but I really think staff is really looking to see how the planning commission feels about the project before they, they go too much further with it. We, they want to make sure that you guys are okay with it.
Understood. All right, last question. I mean, we're seeing the benefits that this is going to provide for, for fire protection. I'm, I'm assuming this is not, this is an expensive project. Devil's advocate, there's got to be something else going on that you would want to spend all this money besides providing better fire protection. I mean, it's a benefit to, to North Penn Water.
Well, as you can see, we've spent $7.3 million over 10 years, and that was really to serve the existing customers we have. If, if, and, and honestly, this is why we're doing it. And you're thinking, well, that, yeah, it is a sizable sum of money. But as a community-owned water provider, we're not here to encourage growth in any way, but there's a certain need here, especially in our institutional area here, to get them the fire flow that's required for that. And, and obviously, it will benefit Grandview Hospital and their expansion. We, we're just in the process of signing an emergency interconnection agreement with them to be their backup. to be their backup water supply. And to truly be their backup water supply, we also need to be able to supplement their fire protection. And so this project will certainly benefit them as well. So we're really focusing on that. And if it if it helps some of the residents, if it obviously Percocie and and Telford, as I mentioned, support the project. So our plan does show a proposed interconnection with Percocie. That's just there for future in the event that there's a need to provide an emergency interconnection with them over in that area. And again, yeah, they're they're from a water standpoint, there, this is a standalone project for me. I don't, I don't, we're not trying to structure this to stimulate growth or development in the township in any way, shape or form. So I I hope that answers your question.
It it kind of does. Yeah, thank you. Um, that's all the questions I have. What I'd like to give to the other planning commission members. And Steve as well.
Yeah, this is John. I have I have a couple of questions too. From looking at your your fire flow diagram, it seems like the majority of the benefit to the project is in and around the hospital. Curious why you didn't look at a site on the hospital property or in closer proximity to the hospital rather than extensively you know, running a new line up Ridge Road and then under three oh nine when you already have water on the other side of three oh nine?
Okay, I I will cover that. I was I was trying to go back to, there we go. I was going back to this slide. Yes, we we looked at various sites closer to this on 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 this side of three oh nine. The first site we looked at was the Grandview outpatient center site off of Ridge Road because they own this property. We actually did some preliminary engineering on that. We met with the township. It looked like it was gaining some traction, but then it was realized that as part of the land development approval of the outpatient center, this area was reserved for overflow parking. And so that essentially killed that site. We looked at West Oak Hill Elementary as a possibility because we had some good elevation in here in this area. There was some wetlands. We could have squeezed it in, not, but there was some issues associated with that site as well. Grandview Hospital site, believe it or not, the the elevation, as you know, drops off pretty quickly in here. Once we lose elevation, that's a problem because now we're building a two hundred foot high tank to get to that the proper overflow elevation that we need for a tank. So it's all not based on on topography from the standpoint, the lower, the lower elevation, the higher the tank to get to the elevation you need to. So it's always good to put a tank at a higher elevation because it's a smaller tank and it's obviously going to be more cost effective to build a smaller tank. So this area behind Grandview Hospital, not a good area again either. So we we didn't see, we looked at over here by the the interchange where the gas station is behind there. It's just, there was just not enough room. And the setback requirements are quite significant to build a tank of this size. You're looking at one and a half times the the tank height. So we're still even going to need a setback variance trying to build on the eleven acre property. So there wasn't a lot of good prospects here. Again, it's really tough finding a really good tank site. But really, just to get under three oh nine is not a big deal here at Almont Road. It's it's a super elevated the highway here, so that it's a fairly very straightforward bore. And then, as you can see, looking at this, we're still not that far away. If you look at the township building and where we proposing the tank, it's where I'm pointing at with the cursor right now. It's not that far to get back. So it seemed like a really good idea. And then why running the transmission main all the way to Tyler's Port? Well, when we put that in, we were looking at a similar situation. And we, ever since we expanded into that area, that we're going to need a water storage tank there. But if we run this water main down Ridge Road, we don't need a water storage tank there. We have we'll have one water storage tank and combine these two pressure zones together. That will, and this tank will serve both of those pressure zones as a combined pressure zone. And it'll be closest to to the biggest need here, which is this institutional area. Currently, we get about a thousand gallons per minute out of these hydrants out here. We really want to get in upwards of thirty five hundred gallons a minute. So there is a very serious deficiency here. And it's something that we want to want to address. And like I mentioned, we spent a lot of money already on the system. We we continue to do main replacement projects out in in the borough system. We've, our goal is is to make this a world class water system. And that's that's how that's our mindset. That's that's how we we go about our business on a day to day operations level to provide the highest level water service. And and our engineering studies showed this to be the optimal solution, which is to run this water storage tank. So we, once we looked at this site at the township, we did even further analysis because one of my concerns is was water age. If we run this line down Ridge Road, are we going to run into an issue with water age? Why is water age important? And I like to say that water is more like beer than wine. It doesn't age well. So we we wanted to make sure that the water did not age significantly before it got to this point. So we developed a a really good operations plan to make this project a success. And I I think at that point, we're, other than main replacement projects, this system will be in really fine shape, you know, for the next thirty, forty years. And again, it's not predicated, this project doesn't, wasn't justified that, oh, we're going to make this windfall, this profit windfall and have lots of development out there. The way I justified it was capital avoidance because we're already looking to build a tank in Tyler's Port and we needed a tank here for West Rock Hill. So I was, by building one tank, I'm able to avoid the expense of another tank. So that's really how it was justified, not based on any future projected windfalls in in revenue.
Okay, thank you. My my second question, and you you may have answered it in your in your presentation, but I just wanted to confirm and might need Steve to help answer this one too. The the existing cell tower, is there anything in the cell tower lease that precludes another structure of a certain height within a certain distance of that cell tower that may interfere with signals?
John, this is Steve. I'm I'm not aware of any restrictions within the lease, but that's, I I didn't review them. Again, the solicitor did, so I I can't fully answer your question then.
Okay. And my last question is somewhat similar. You're also in close proximity to PPNL's transmission lines. Have you had contact with PPNL and gotten something in writing from them that you are a safe distance away from from their transmission facilities? That the line there, I believe, is currently sixty nine thousand volts and my read is right, those towers look like they could handle up to two hundred and thirty thousand volts. That you are clear enough and properly grounded enough so that you're not susceptible to any induced voltage from the power lines?
We have not, but let me tell you this. We we built a tank in Franconia Township and went into service in two thousand and fifteen, I think it was. It is a very large tank, one of the largest in the area, three million gallon tank, which dwarfs the size of this tank, of course. We built directly next to their main transmission lines, which is their interconnection between Pico and PPNL. And it was a closer distance than this. We worked with them on that. There was not any issues. This is a project of much smaller magnitude, so I'm I'm very confident that there won't be an issue. We had not contacted them in particular. I did not see it as a major issue because of our experience in dealing with PPNL in the past on on a very similar and a much larger issue.
Okay.
Dan, this is, I'm sorry, John. Dan, this is Steve. Did you say earlier that you did talk to the tank manufacturers about the proximity to the water line and they didn't have an issue?
Uh, you mean the 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 power lines? Yes, yes. I I brought that up to him. I I said, look, we're we're constructing next to these buildings. We have a cell tower over here. We have these power lines. And and of course, they build hundreds of tanks in all kinds of various situations, contacted the three largest tank builders that would probably bid on that on on this project and wanted to get their feedback and opinions very early on on the constructability of this site. And they all hit in very positively with it. The one was didn't want to build the larger size just because of their construction techniques. They do it, the do, the three large ones do have larger, I'm sorry, different tech, construction techniques on how they build these tanks. Some build the bowl on the ground and then lift the bowl up. Others build the bowl in the air. So they they have, they look at these projects in different ways. That's why I wanted to get as much feedback as possible on that. And no, they they had no issues with with any of those circumstances, the the power lines, the cell tower or the building.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Any other planning commission members have questions?
Yeah, this is, this is Tim. Sorry, you briefly touched on it, but the useful life of the tank. What is the useful life of this tank and what happens at the end of this useful life?
Well, the the largest, the oldest tank in our system was just replaced by that tank I showed you at Lansdale. That tank was placed into service in nineteen forty seven. So that that particular tank lasted about seventy, seventy five years, and it could have lasted another twenty five, thirty years. So I I a tank properly maintained like this can last a hundred years. It and we, of course, maintain our tanks in the appropriate manner with regular inspections. Maintenance, we we repaint our tanks every twenty, twenty five years. And as long as you do that and maintain the coating system on a steel tank like this, it can last a very long time. But a lot of times, they just outgrow their usefulness. And 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 a lot of times, these tanks are just taken down because they don't meet the need anymore, not because there's a structural deficiency on the tank. Which is was the case in in our situation. It just didn't meet the the needs of the system anymore, so we had to take it down.
Okay, thank you.
This is Andy. Dan, just one question. If, what if there's any spray paint or graffiti? Do you maintain that and take care of that? Or is there a fence that's going to go around it? Any, any comment on that?
Yeah, we we did suggest a proposed a fence around it. We do like to fence in our tanks. And most of our facilities are fenced in now. And we we really started to harden our our facilities after nine eleven and two thousand and one. And and so all of our facility, the facility is appropriately alarmed. We're now looking at providing video surveillance around our tanks in particular, but it will be fenced in. And and so if anyone were to even try to climb the tank, we have alarms now built into that to prevent that. These type of tanks are extremely hard to climb because there is no ladder to climb. The ladder is inside the facility. And of course, it's it's thoroughly secured and 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 behind a tank, behind in a fenced area. So we found fences to be quite deterrents because most time, tanks are vandalized. It's it's just kids. They they want to spray paint something on the tank and and stuff like that. We we found that once we fence facilities in, that pretty much stops.
Thank you.
This is Alex. I have a couple of questions. I guess one is, I see the easement is coming down the current township building driveway. Steve, was there any discussion about relocating that or the re relocation of the driveway or the entrance there? Would that still work with the the proposed plan?
We had discussion, and I think it's common in our letter of putting the water line in the lawn, just getting it out of the driveway altogether. I think what I heard earlier from Dan is they're willing to talk to us about where that line actually will would lie across the township property.
Okay. And then my other question on that would, would there be a possibility of running service over to James Park?
Is that to us or to Steve?
Uh, that's to you guys, yeah.
We're we're willing and open to any of that and we can talk to where this water line will be located. And and the township building also, if they want it, could go to get public water service off of this as well. But we'll talk to about the water line. The only concern we have about keeping it out of off the 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 parking area is that we found that when you plant and when you put water lines in grass area, there also, we've had issues of stuff getting planted like shade trees on top of water lines, fences and things like that. But we'll, we'll, we can work it out with the township either way. If if the best solution is to put it in the parking lot, we would fully restore it. And we we have no problem doing that. It's a small cost compared to the overall overall cost of the project. If if that was the issue about what condition the road would be in when we're done.
My thinking on that was we're talking about realigning that entrance with the park and the side road in the township building. And I just wanted to make sure if it was coming in there that that was the right location to have it in. But my last question is, there's a red service lateral shown coming out of the back left corner of the township building, kind of under the corner of the proposed solar panels and running to the township maintenance building. Do you know what that is?
I I believe it was identified in the ground penetrating survey. There was there was waters, sewer, electric. All the utilities are coming from the township building. I don't know if that was in a fiber optic line or something like that. I don't know. Maybe maybe Greg would know. But we, if you want to see that, Steve, the the detailed report, I'd be happy to share that with you.
Yeah, the township was aware of that. That that is all the telecommunications lines that go back and forth and it's the utilities in general over to the maintenance building.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you.
So at this point, I'm just going to say that we are hoping, of course, that the planning commission would endorse the project. We just have a sketch plan at this point. We don't have a a preliminary plan, a detailed site plan at this point. We can certainly, we are, we started our surveying of the property. And so we're moving in that direction. But obviously, we're hesitant to spend too much money on the site without endorsement. I I I don't want to have a sunk cost into the project only to have it, you know, not be a successful project. So obviously, we'd love to walk away from this meeting with your endorsement. And same with the the land development waiver, it would be just an endorsement at this point because we need a detailed site plan, I think, before that decision could be made. But again, I I just do think it's warranted. It and I, again, we would continue to work with the township and the township engineer on this project. We're not looking to circumvent that in any way. But it would streamline the permitting process and make it a little bit help us out with our construction schedule.
I'm sorry, I made comment. My microphone was turned off. I'm sorry. Steve, it looked like you were about to say something.
Yeah, Chris, I I just wanted to highlight a few of the items that were in my March thirtieth letter, particularly related to what zoning approval would be required for this project.
And that's what I was saying before I realized I wasn't on.
Okay. Yeah, as 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 Dan indicated, you know, in the beginning of his presentation, it is you know, quote unquote, a permitted use in the in the the VC zoning district, but it's permitted by special exception, which means it still does need to go to the zoning hearing board for approval. It's not the same burden as proving a variance or, you know, hardships that that you would normally argue for a variance, but there are some sections of the ordinance that that identify what what has to be shown with a special exception application. And it's the standard items of you know, the use being suitable for the property in question in the best interest of the township, you know, its effect on surrounding uses. So most of the items that that were talked about in the in the presentation tonight, but it does require that step to go to the zoning hearing board for the for the use approval. There's also a potential actual There's also a potential actual variance, uh which was item two in my letter. Oh, I'm 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 sorry, item two was print was uh an additional principal use on the property. That that that's a variance. The third one has to do with the height of the tower. It does, I believe, meet all the setbacks to the property lines. But the ordinance also reads that it should have the one and a half times the height to adjoining buildings. And in that case, it doesn't because the municipal building, the office and the and the uh maintenance building are closer than that to the tower. So that setback from existing would be another issue that would be need to be addressed. I I guess there's some benefit to it's, it's our building, so it's not, you know, a neighbor's property that uh is in question. It's uh municipal buildings themselves.
All right, so all three, all three of those items would have to go through zoning hearing.
Yeah, in one fashion or another, that would it would need to go through the zoning hearing board. Um with all the zoning applications, the board and the, you know, the planning commission always have the opportunity to the to comment on those applications when they when they come through. But I I think as, you know, again, as Dan mentioned, they're they're looking for uh, you know, feedback from the township to determine if, you know, this is a desirable project before they would, you know, go through those extra steps of getting those approvals.
All right. I mean, personally, but my initial reaction is, oh my gosh, a giant water tower next to the township building across from our park. I do um able to identify the need for this and the potential benefits of coming out Ridge Road. We do have a lot of well issues uh due to, well, theoretically due to the the quarrying uh activity out there. The the uh one and a half times to a building, I I I initially, again, I had issue with that. We put that in there for a reason. But again, we have a cell tower that's uh that doesn't fall within that as either. I I think at this point I am okay with this project, although again, I am, I'm a little skeptical of the the one and a half time uh fall ratio. But that, you know, that'll, that'll has to go through zoning hearing. What's anybody else have for thoughts?
This is Alex. I agree with you, Chris. I a little skeptical, but I can definitely see the the benefits. I'd uh be curious to hear what what, if anything, the local residents have to say about it as well.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
This is Andy. Um I mean, with the cell tower and the power lines, there's already a lot going on there already. So um I I don't, you know, it's just one more thing.
May maybe I should just point out here to that as part of the zoning hearing board process, all of the adjacent property owners would be notified in writing and by mail. But you folks probably already know this, but uh they they would be given ample opportunity then at that point to to voice any concerns, just saying.
Yep, thank you.
This is Tim. Uh yeah, I think initially my uh reaction was um the same with, oh my gosh, a huge water tank and, you know, what ulterior motives might there be with regard to water and sewer and what have you? But um based on the presentation, I sincerely see the need for it, so I would be okay with it.
John, you have any input?
Yeah, I'm sitting here scratching my head. I guess you can't hear that. Yeah, it, I mean, personally, I I prefer that it not be there. If it's, if the knee is closer to the hospital, I'd prefer that it be over by the hospital, but I understand what you want and what you can get aren't necessarily the same thing. I I I have to compliment Dan on the quality of his presentation. I thought you really did a lot of a a lot of uh homework ahead of time because I had a real long list of questions and you answered most of them before I even had a chance to ask any of them. So thank you for for all of your effort in putting it together.
You're welcome.
I I I I guess I don't have a reason to say no.
All right, well, Dan, I guess you you got, it sounds like you got the input you were looking for.
Yes, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Um so yeah, we'll see where it goes from here.
Okay, I I guess I should stop sharing my screen at this point, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be helpful.
Well, for another guy.
This is this is Michael Kraft. I I don't know all the names of the other participants in the meeting, but the chairman made a good comment that, or I think Mr. Olmer did too, he'd be interested in hearing what the residents, would it be appropriate if anybody else who hasn't had a chance to either lodge a question or give his perspective, be offered an opportunity now to to uh let you folks hear what they have to say?
You're asking if we have someone attending the meeting that would like to comment?
Yeah, your agenda says public comments come at the end, but um I don't know if anybody's going to be jumping off if they have any comments about this and be, whatever you feel it's appropriate to hear that, if there's anybody out there, we'd be interested in hearing it.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed for someone, uh someone wants to raise their hand and make some comment or question uh on this project. All right, well, we're not seeing anything, so it was a good idea. Maybe maybe they'll come around at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the suggestion. All right, if there's nothing else, uh we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Yes, thank you. We're signing off. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is uh T H P.
Okay, I think I'll take it from here, if that's okay with you, Chris.
That would be great.
Okay, I think we were last before you guys back in June, or the earlier part of this pandemic. It was one of the first Zoom meetings that we had been to. And I see we're still doing Zoom meetings. To refresh your memory, the T H Properties are proposing to develop this sixteen point seven acre site under the township's I S Institutional Service Zoning District using uh use B ten, which is age qualified community. Uh the site previously contained a precision finishing incorporated facility. Uh the maximum density of the site is five point six dwelling units per acre, and at this point, we're proposing seventy-three townhouse units. Uh we prepared the uh the preliminary plan, which you're reviewing after meeting with this uh planning commission last June. And we took several of your concerns and incorporated them into the plan. The property is located behind the Stone Ridge Professional Center and adjacent to the Hidden Meadows Apartment and Dementia Buildings. Now, the community is uh proposed to be served by public sewer via Sellersville um Borough Facilities and public water via North Penn Water Authority. Steve has generated a letter dated April seventh, which contains twenty-seven comments. Uh just about all of them are will complies. Uh there were just a few issues that um we'd like to talk to you about tonight. And uh whatever your preference, do you want me to go through item by item or highlight those items that we have uh issues with?
Yeah, I mean, there's so many of them. I actually, I couldn't pinpoint which ones are are more important to to uh talk about. Steve, if you want to.
It might, it might be beneficial if um Sherry, if you have this plan to pull it up, uh Bob, to take a second just to describe anything that's different on the current layout than what was on the sketch plan. I think there's some some trails and access easements and things that might be a little bit different, just so everyone has a clear picture of where we are today. Do you have that overall plan, Sherry?
There you go.
Okay, um yeah, the the layout is basically the same as was proposed uh at the sketch plan uh stage. Uh the difference being, um the main difference visually anyway, is uh the the sketch plan, we had shown a emergency uh access slash pedestrian a path from the end of the cul-de-sac uh going along the western property line and tying back in uh to, I think at that time we were calling it uh Road B. We took another look at that after um like one of the planning commission members had suggested we look at running that behind units twenty-nine uh to uh unit forty. And it does make more sense to take that path up there. It's a shorter distance, therefore it's less impervious surface. Um we can still um uh provide uh circulation pattern that that works for the fire vehicles. And we think that's a better idea. That's why uh the current plan shows that there. There is still a number of trails, almost a quarter of a mile of macadam, a path through this development, uh ranging in width from fifteen feet, where it's going to also serve for emergency access uh to eight feet that goes between the the units at the center of the project. Um we're also showing a a trotting footpath, which is basically a a trail through the woods uh to provide a different type of of hike uh for the residents than uh walking on a multi-use macadam path. And that was one of the items that Steve raised in his letter having to do with buffers. Um other than that, it's it's basically the same. The the original sketch plan we had showed uh showing seventy-five units, this proposal uh shows seventy-three. That was based on the site capacity calculations. So again, if you want me to go through the items, we can do that or?
Yeah, you know what? Let's just do that. Um if it's a will comply, just blow through it.
Okay.
If it's something that warrants some discussion, somebody will probably jump on that.
Okay, uh item, item one, that's a, that's a one of the simply will complies. Item two, um that's what we see as the major issue in the letter. Uh it has to do with uh street right of ways. This is basically um, well, it's essentially a parking lot uh that will be privately owned and maintained by homeowners association. The requirement for a right of way is in the subdivision ordinance, and we have asked for a waiver of that requirement. Um these, these are condominium units, they're not fee simple. And um the occupants of the, the owners of each of these units basically own paint to paint. They they don't own the the land. They may own a small, a limited common element outside of their unit, but for the most part, the what you see there, other than the units themselves, are owned and maintained by the homeowners association. In fact, the the uh the age restricted, one of the age restricted requirements is that all of the roads, uh the roads, drives, parking lots, all be privately maintained. There is nothing that will be offered for dedication to the township. Additionally, that 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 comes into play with the uh if if there's a requirement for a street right of way is is a setback of thirty-five feet from that right of way, um which would push these units back an extra fifteen feet and e- essentially reduce by several uh units of the density of the development. Um it would also um allow back to back parking. I understand there was some some concern about uh overhanging vehicles on sidewalks. Um these, these are proposed right now at twenty feet, um which is more than the requirement for a parking space, which is only nineteen. To to push the units back thirty-five feet, again, would allow back to back parking or encourage back to back parking, which essentially is a seventeen and a half foot parking space, which I think you would be more likely to have a car overhanging the sidewalk under that that scenario than the way it's proposed here. We've done many of these townhome communities, and just about all of them have a twenty-foot uh setback from the sidewalk, and we're not aware of any issues in any of those developments.
Would you indicate garages?
Uh they do, each will have a two-car garage. So the parking is not an issue uh here. It'll be two. Now, we don't count both cars, uh cars in the in each garage, you only count the first one. But even still, between the the parking in the garage, the parking in the driveways and the overflow overflow parking within the parking lot itself, um there is ample parking proposed.
And these are all. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna jump on this one, jump in on this one. So just for comparison purposes, Rose Cliff is our really our other similar age restricted community, uh which is built, I guess, prior to the current zoning ordinance, but similar ordinance at the time. And that is not condominium, that is, that is fee simple lots. But all in all, it's a townhouse, age restricted community with a, you know, homeowners association that operates privately maintained streets and open space. That development was designed with the with street right of ways uh and and based off off of that. The the internal discussion we had with staff was the um, while the ordinance calls for private roads, it also says private roads built to public street standards and right of way requirements are in the public street standards. So I think the initial interpretation from the township was that it it may not just be a subdivision ordinance waiver, it might be uh require a zoning variance because of the reference in the zoning ordinance to the public street standards. Uh that's something we would need to clarify with with the applicant. We could, you know, we could have those discussions. But that that was the the basis of of me bringing out that question. Uh and we've always had, you know, the last part, the the setback from the sidewalk is our ongoing discussions about driveway lengths. And you know, we went to a great extent when the ordinance was revised for establishing different different driveway lengths and and off-street parking standards. So I I just wanted to make you aware that twenty-five or the twenty-foot is what's shown on the plan, and potentially, under the ordinance, thirty-five feet would be required if a right of way were established.
What what is it in Rose Cliff?
It's more than twenty. I'm not, I can't guarantee that it's the thirty-five because it was the prior zoning ordinance. I I just don't remember off offhand.
Yeah, I I think we're open to deeper than twenty if if necessary, um but we don't think thirty-five is is the appropriate.
And and just just for clarity, Bob, uh when you say you might um have to lose units to 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 do that extra setback if a right of way were involved, is that because of the open space you would lose by pushing the units back further into the open areas?
No, well, essentially, if you if you look at the the uh the northern um edge of the property, tho- those units are set on the building setback line. So the roads themselves would have to go fifteen feet further south, each of them. So when you got banks of units on either side, that's that's another thirty feet going to the south.
Okay, so it's this, it's the setback to the outbound relying that is the restriction you have for some of the units.
Right, right now, we have excess open space. We have more open space than is required.
I thought so.
The issue, it's it's dimensionally.
Well.
The and and just to, just to throw it out there, uh you know, our other, the other fear or discussion in the township has been with private streets, what happens when somebody comes back to to uh to the township? As as has happened, at least in one occasion, to try and turn it back to the township. Obviously, you wouldn't expect it to be less likely in a situation like this where there would be a fairly strong, in this case, condominium association, uh but, you know, it's something to consider.
How how can they turn it back when it's uh required in the zoning ordinance? How, how can they turn it back when it's, uh, required in the zoning ordinance? They have to get a, get a variance after the fact?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what process we would go through, but it doesn't stop people from asking.
Right. All right. And when are we gonna get a determination if, uh, the 20-feet waiver is actually a, a variance?
I guess, process-wise, the applicant should make a formal request to the township to, of that zoning section. And we could respond to it.
All right. Well, I mean, that is a, I wouldn't say it's a drastic difference, but it's a large difference, 20 to 35.
I mean, there, I, I guess there could be the potential that we still laid, we laid it out with right-of-way line, and there was a, you know, a variance thought for the setback. You know, there, there might be some middle ground to have right-of-ways for, uh, conformity with other projects, but, give relief on, on the setback. I'm not sure, and, and it's not something we're gonna solve tonight, but, um, I think it's still worth going through the rest of the items, so, you know, everything is on the table, and, and then the applicant can see where they want to go.
All right, so we're kind of table number two here.
I think it needs further investigation, yes.
Okay, before, okay, item number three, um, has to do with the access. Right now, we have, uh, two access points on the Hidden Meadow Drive, and we have an emergency access that ties into the existing, uh, private drive to the north end of the project that is shared with the Y-Sup property. It goes out to Alon Avenue. So essentially, there's three points of access for this.
The, uh, the second one you had spoke of, that, uh, to the east side of unit 52 there? Is that what I'm seeing with the collapsible bollard?
Yes, between 52 and 53.
Yeah, right. All right, thank you.
Uh, item four, uh, that, uh, that has to do with the, uh, emergency access I, I spoke about earlier from the cul-de-sac, um, back along unit 40, tying back into the development. That's, that's the one we, we changed based on the comments at the sketch plan stage.
All right, so I want to talk about this cul-de-sac. What, what is the actual distance of this, of this cul-de-sac, and what area are you considering the beginning of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, we're, we're measuring from the nearest intersecting street, which would leave that cul-de-sac at a 650-foot length.
So I'm looking at a diamond shape with a number four in it where Road B and Road A intersect?
Yes.
Is that where you're measuring from?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I would agree with that interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't consider anything closer to the bend than that. And you're saying there's 19 units there?
Yes.
Yeah, depending where you cut off and, on the unit that's right at the intersection there, but plus or minus 19.
Okay, yeah, I got it. All right. It, it looked like there was more to me. That was just deception, I guess. Okay, that, that clears that for me. Thank you.
So it still leaves us, I'm sorry, uh, Bob, it still leaves us, the, the length is correct, but the 12, the 12 units is the...
Yeah, right, we're above the, the 12 allowed.
Above the 12 units, but they have the, they're offering that access easement that goes from the cul-de-sac area back to, back to the loop.
Is there, uh, we got fire hydrants on there?
Yes. Yeah, and the plan will be reviewed, um, by the fire marshal.
Yeah, the, the fire marshal has, well, in this, we don't have a fire marshal anymore, just for clarity. But we send it to the servicing fire companies, and they've seen the different sketch plan versions and had no, adverse comments at that time. We were kind of waiting to, to send it to them again until we were certain that this is now going to be a, you know, a final layout. But at least, in, in their initial reviews of the access, they, they had no objections to them.
Well, I, I would comment that with the discussions we've recently had about, uh, extended cul-de-sac length, uh, this would, seems like it would meet our, our criteria. But we're in an opposite scenario where we have, we're under the length, but we're, you know, seven units over the, over the limit, which is something I don't know that we really discussed in that, that meeting. It was more about length, not the, not units. But I think I'd be all right with it, uh, as long as the, the, the fire people are.
Yeah, Chris, and, and this is Andy. In the October minutes, we indicated that there was consensus at that time. So that's from the October meeting. Now, obviously, there's been discussion since, but we, we did put that out there in October.
At the, when we saw this initial sketch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to see if we're in compliance with what we had, uh, discussed at our, our meeting about cul-de-sac length and emergency access.
This is Tim. I mean, I, I think the conversation back then was about the fact that the 12 dwelling units was based on frontage on a, what, single-family home, uh, Steve?
Correct.
And this being, you know, townhomes versus single-family homes would therefore, you know, allow you to have more dwelling units on a shorter lane or shorter cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and having public water. Fire hydrant. Any other comments?
All right, okay. Yeah, moving on, item number five, um, uh, that, uh, talks about a, uh, there's an existing access easement that serves Hidden Meadows through, um, what, what was the Precision Finishing Parking Lot out to that private drive. This would basically, uh, eliminate that easement and replace it with, um, the right-of passage through the parking lots and that private drive. So they would continue to have an access easement. It would just be a different configuration and actually a more usable one.
Can, can you explain where that was?
Uh, let's see, it shows up better on one of the other sheets, but it was, if you look at, uh, you can see the Hidden Meadows Parking Lot?
Yes.
And then Hidden Meadows Drive coming north from there?
Yep.
Parallel that maybe by about 50 feet off to the left. It's, it's just a, a 12-foot wide driveway, essentially.
It went, went behind the building?
Uh, no, it went, um, between the Hidden Meadows Drive Parking Lot and this development.
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I would say it essentially came off the, the middle of the parking lot from the apartment building and went straight up toward units one and two in the new development.
Yes. Okay.
So at that, at that time, that was convenient to the parking lot from Precision Finishing. That, that's how it ended up in that location.
Okay, so Steve, are you comfortable with what they're proposing here?
Yeah, it's just, you know, they, they need, uh, to work out that agreement with the, with the property owner.
Right.
To extinguish the old and create the new access rights.
Okay. All right.
Okay, the next is item six. That's a simply will comply. That's an O and M agreement. Uh, item seven talks to the open space. There's about two, 3.2 acres required. Uh, we're proposing, uh, more than double that at this point, 7.5 acres of open space. Steve pointed out a couple of areas where we were meandering swales through the open space to some of the basins, and we'll, um, we can adjust that open space, calculated open space number, uh, to eliminate those.
Yeah, just, just for clarity of everyone, they, on this plan, you know, generically, that all this shaded area or cross-hatched area is quote-unquote "open space", but to meet the ordinance requirement, you have to net out certain, certain things like stormwater management basin, so, I just asked them to tweak how they, how they netted out some area, but they should still have more than enough.
Okay, uh, item number eight, uh, that speaks to the recreation area that's proposed on the plan. Uh, at this point, we're not proposing any amenities, uh, only because we prefer to defer, um, the decision on the amenities to the homeowners of the condo association, whether they want bocce bar or whether they want, um, more active or less active. But there is a significant recreational pathway system being proposed between the sidewalks and the macadam path through the development and, and hopefully, uh, with the trodden footpath through the woods.
Are, are you, I, I don't know if Dean ended up on the call or not. I didn't, I didn't see him, so I don't know if he could answer this, but are you saying that THP would be offering to construct some recreation facilities once the association determines what they would be? Or provide funds to the association to construct facilities in the future?
I think, Dean, are you on the call here?
Yeah, Dean's on the call.
Yep. Did you, did you understand what I was asking, Dean?
Yeah, I do understand what you're asking. It, um, it's a little bit of an open-ended question, obviously with some limitations. Uh, it would take some additional discussion, but we'd be open to it. I guess what Bob's indicating there is, um, we're not claiming to have it nailed down in terms of what exact recreational facilities or what additional recreation facilities we should be applying to.
Okay, but there's still the potential that you could buy agreement, set aside funds for X amount of facilities, if that's the way we, we worked it out?
Yeah, we would, through discussion, uh, or mutual agreement, yes, that is correct.
So I guess the question for the planning commission is, do you have any specific thoughts on what recreation facilities should be? Are you comfortable leaving that a little bit more of an open item, and that would be worked out with sort of the marketing of the property and what they might build?
I, I have no problem leaving that, uh, as an open-ended item, um, as long as it is, uh, agreed upon. I mean, the homeowners, you know, it might be some primarily, you know, a, a group that likes to play beach volleyball or something like that, or, or bocce ball, whatever. To, to put it in place beforehand, might, uh, seem, uh, like it's not warranted.
Yeah, this, Alex, I'd just add to that, maybe if there was some set dollar value assigned to it or something like that. And then whether it was a putting green or beach volleyball or whatever, really wouldn't matter.
This is Tim. Yeah, I have no, uh, I have no problems with them, that being determined later.
Sean, I agree.
This, yeah, I, I like the trail and, and leaving the rest open ended, it's okay to me.
All right, and, and just a little bit follow-on on the trails then. Two, two issues, uh, I guess the, the ordinance calls for hard-surface trails. Obviously, they're, they're providing some hard-surface trails and some more natural trail, as Bob referenced, the trodden footpath. So the first question, Ari, is, is the planning commission comfortable with that? You know, concept that the, the hard-surface trails that they're proposing is adequate with the addition of the other type of trail? And then the ordinance does specifically call for some benches and trash receptacles along the trail. So the question would be, is THP okay with installing those amenities along the trail?
But, I mean, is there, is there a length of trail or a percentage of property that needs to have a trail on it that?
No, it just says trails.
I mean, I, I do like the, the idea of a, of a natural trail. It might be a little, it might be a bit of a liability if it's, if it's not a hard surface, but especially in an age-qualified development. But I think, I, I think the, the, the natural aspect, is, is that partially wooded through there?
Yes, yeah, it's all wooded.
Yeah. Yeah, be fun to pave.
Right. I mean, in, in reality, they, they would be liable to walk back there anyway. We're just proposing them to guide them in the right direction.
Yeah, follow the deer path.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing that, you know, that I have this sentiment of objection to those trails. I'm just pointing, pointing out, it's the planning commission think that that's, you know, that network in general is agreeable.
Steve, is there any differentiation between sidewalks and trails as far as that goes?
Uh, no. Let me just double-check that section in the ordinance. I'm not sure if it references trails and open space or just trail in general. B10, six. Oh, yeah, the, the trail section specifically, specifically refers to trails through the open space area. Minimum of eight feet in width and constructed with a hard surface with benches and trash receptacles along the trail. But it doesn't, doesn't say length or, you know, how much there should be. So they are providing trails, some hard-surface trails through the open space area, and then an additional natural trail through the other open space area.
Yeah, I think between the, between the trails themselves and the sidewalks, there's probably an excess of a mile of, of walking, hard-walking paths to this development.
Would the, uh, the 15-foot-wide emergency access lane be considered, I mean, would that be usable for a walking path?
Oh, yes, yeah. Actually, it started out as a walking path. It became an emergency access.
Is that open space area that it's on?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you can consider that as a hard-surface trail and, to the southeast of that, that trail as well as in the?
Yes.
Okay. Open space area. All right, yeah, I don't think I have a problem with that, uh, trodden footpath.
And then just, just the cleanup item on that, uh, for THP is that, are you agreeable to put benches and trash receptacles to meet that section of the ordinance on the hard, hard paths?
Yes, we are.
Great.
About, uh, the ADA accessibility?
Yes, yeah, well, we may have to make some adjustments on grades and may have to provide, uh, some short sections of handrail, but, uh, yeah, we can comply with that.
All right, well, let's keep moving then.
Well, this is Alex. One more question. Would we be looking for benches and trash receptacles on that trodden path as well?
That's, that's not really the intent. The 10 is the path through the woods. Not a real defined, uh, I mean, maybe woodchips where there's, where, where it's necessary, but it's, it's not really a, it's, it's not intended for that high intensity of use. I would suspect that the multi-use pass will get used considerably more than the footpath through the woods.
Do you have, uh, benches and receptacles on the emergency access lane?
Oh, we will, and we can, as long as they don't interfere with the, the path of the, the fire truck, and they shouldn't.
Right. Yeah, I think we'd be all right without final level benches in the woods. Be nice to have one here or there, maybe, resting station. Paint it camouflage. All right, any, any more questions on number eight? All right, why don't we keep moving?
Okay, item nine, that's a, that's a will comply. That'll be handled into condo documents. 10 talks about the natural resource protection and the site capacity calculations. And those are all simply will complies. Item 11. Yes, that'll be part of the disclosures that THP will provide their buyers. So that's a will comply. Item 12 has to do with buffer yards. Yeah, there's significant vegetation there now, but we're not opposed to supplementing that, especially around the Wiesel property that, that question came up. That's A. B talks about the trodden footpath in the buffer areas. Again, this is a, simply a path through the woods. There's nothing structural to it. I, I would think as long as you can avoid trees, not, we, the intent with the trodden footpath is not to take any trees down. The path would meander in and amongst the trees. It's, it's not, it's not something that's to be clear cut or anything like that. So the, the fact that it meanders within, within the buffers, I, I don't, I don't know that it really, it won't have a negative impact on the neighboring properties if, if that's a concern.
I, I brought it up just to point out, I mean, especially I think in the, we'll call it the rear, but that, that path furthest away from from Hidden Meadows Drive, that, you know, that has the most spots where it comes in and, in and out of there. I, I understand what Bob is saying, that, that's not necessarily going to be the exact location of the path, but my suggestion is just that we would minimize how much it went, it went into the buffer yard, just because it encourages people to, you know, if they meander, they end off the path, they end up meandering right off the property.
Right.
Yeah, understood.
This is Alex. I would also suggest we try to keep it within the buffer over there by the, the Stephen Lesko building.
Yes.
No, keep it out of the buffer. I, I, I mean, there, there's no need for extra screening, is there? I think you could keep that out of the buffer area. Probably safe, if it's as wood as, as you're saying, I, I haven't been out on the property, but what it has to say, it is, it shouldn't require anymore as long as stay clear from the property boundary.
Okay, we can adjust that location. Okay, item 13 was something that we, we talked about at the last meeting is the distribution of parking. We adjusted the location to spread it out throughout the development. I don't know if you could picture where, where it had been before, but so that there's overflow parking within a short distance of each unit.
So you have, you're over the requirement, said Bob.
Yes.
You all right with that, Steve?
Yeah, I tried to find a reason to complain about this, but I couldn't really find one, so.
Sorry.
At least you're doing your job.
All right, you know, there's some closer than others, but it, I think they did a reasonably good job of distributing around the property.
Right.
Okay, item 14 talks about the requested waivers. We had submitted a waiver request letter with the preliminary plans. Did you want me to go through that at this point?
Yeah, let me see if I can find it.
Okay, it was dated March the 8th, addressed to Greg.
Okay, I got one.
Okay, item one had to do with the provision of the street right of way, which we had already discussed. Item two has to do with street alignment. The like, in particular, centerline radius is what we're proposing is lessened, which is required for a typical public street. But again, these are basically a, a parking lot and the slow speed, these will be posted, streets or drives will be posted for a 15 mile an hour speed limit. Item three.
Was item B under 15 of the review letter?
Yes.
Yeah, that has to do with that truck turning movement plan. You all may or may not have seen, but there were some areas where that is probably an error and Bob needs to rerun that to make sure that the, the truck movement stays within the, the street alignment based on the return radiuses that they have. You think that's possible, right, Bob?
Yes, yeah, that's correct. It was an oversight.
And if that is the case, then waiving 509 would be, is it 509 or 509? Yeah. If, if that is the case, then waiving 509 would not be an issue?
Right, I mean, that, that would be the concern, is make sure that the trucks and the emergency vehicles could get through. So if they could prove they get through, then not an issue.
Before we consider these waivers, do we need to make sure that the references to public street design is not a zoning issue?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't suggest that you're probably not voting on anything tonight, but going over and getting everything on the table and and then seeing what issues have to be addressed before you can move forward.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, but what we would like, if it's okay with the planning commission meeting is, is to get your direction on, on these items tonight. And then if we could meet with township staff to iron out the details before we come back to see you again the next time. That's what we would like from tonight.
All right.
Okay, the third waiver request is driveways proposed within 60 feet of an intersection. And again, these are, are slow speed posted at 15 mile an hour drives. Now, there's a number of waiver requests from the stormwater management ordinance. Maximum four to one side slope without without a written statement. 1.0 feet of free board in a spillway. Four to one side slopes on detention basins. And a pipe discharge setback 75 feet from the receiving waterway.
All right, Steve, do you have comments about these written or do you have something you want to give us?
Well, I, I hate to say with all these comments that I do have that I missed one. And I, I didn't, I, I thought about it and then I, it left my mind when I was writing a letter, so I didn't, I didn't look into it fully, but we also have with basins, the fencing requirement depending on the, the depth of the basin. And so I, I want to go back and look at that. With respect to the side slopes too, to, you know, as a general safety issue. What is the depth of the pond water in the basin? Does it fall into that required fence category? And if it does or doesn't, what are the side slopes that we're, that we're looking at? So that issue, I, I'd like to reserve some time to, to look at that a little bit closer. Some of the other requests they made are relatively minor technical details and there's a lot of little stormwater questions I have and I'd rather reserve, you know, the final comment on that till we have the, the overall system figured out.
Yeah, and, and add, these basins are relatively shallow. These aren't your old fashioned eight, 10 foot deep basins. These are mainly like two to three feet deep at the most.
I thought so. So they, they more than likely fall within our standard to not require a defense, but I would be able to verify that. I guess, I guess some of the other concerns, you know, the planning commission had had in the past is, you know, for safety proximity to, to dwelling units and, and kids and while there's not going to be kids living here, I guess there could be kids visiting this community.
All right. We're good with the waiver request letter? We can move on to 15?
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, 15A is the, the right of way that we've, we've discussed. B is the, the street alignment that we, that we just talked about. C has to do with the, whether these will be just depressed curving sidewalk because of the, this, the setback from the street. And yeah, that's a will comply. D also will comply. E will comply. F is a will comply. Item number 16 has to do with the intersection of Hidden Meadow Drive and I guess it's farmers out at that point. There's a site distance issue from that existing intersection looking to the south. Dean had met with the property owner and named Valiant attempted getting some kind of agreement on him to clear at least some minimal vegetation removal to improve the site distance to the right. And he, he just didn't get anywhere. He even hired it. There was somewhat of a, a language issue. And Steve even, or Steve, Dean even lined up a Korean translator to, to help out with the, with any kind of language barrier and, and the response he got from the homeowners, that they, he didn't even want to talk about it. So I don't know what more we can do. Maybe the township can step in and help. But again, it's an, it's an existing intersection and it could use some, some help with the site distance improvement.
Yeah, we, we raised the question because it was, you know, it's always been with the, with the other developments and, you know, there will be significantly more traffic now than there is with the, with the apartment building and dimension unit that are back there. So I think it's something we need to investigate a little bit further with the applicant to see if we can't at least facilitate some cooperation down there to improve the, the situation.
Could I, this? Dean? Yeah, this was Dean. I just wanted to actually give a little bit of stronger language in here with this. When I was dealing with the Mr. Chung, as Bob had mentioned here, we had, we had some language lack of understandings, if you will, and I would say it went both ways and the meetings were relatively lengthy just due to the lack of understanding. And when we got the Korean gentleman involved, it got resolved extremely quickly. He dealt with the guy, there was, he did it via text and he sent me the text. I can't read Korean, but it's text in Korean that went over to him because Mr. Chung would not answer the phone. And so he said he immediately went to text, thinking the gentleman might respond to text and he did immediately. And the, the language that he used was that he would not entertain THP crossing the property line in any way, shape or form. And he ended it, the gentleman told me that we were dealing with for interpretation with, there will be no more conversation on this. And he, he told me in English, he goes, he used very strong Korean language when he made that point. So from our standpoint, we were into a, against a brick wall at that point. He's checked back in with me since then more than once just to find out if there's been any change on it. And obviously there hasn't been from our end. So what happens if you cannot get resolution on this and we can't get better site distance?
I don't have a final answer for you on that. I'm just suggesting that we don't write it off yet. If there's some way that we could get it, I think we should, we should try. Obviously THP has made their effort and, you know, the township is willing to, to try to get involved, that may or may not sway something.
So this entrance could all be hinging on this negotiation. I mean, what, what's the solution if you can't get it?
I, I, like I said, I don't, I don't have an alternate, right?
Right. Bob as well.
Yeah, well, we'll talk to TPD, you know, I, I hate to bring this up, but you could always use the convex mirrors that help with site distance in, in situations like this. And, and I mean, that might be the ultimate fallback position.
All right, I like that. That's what people use on their, when they live on a corner.
Is the issue right at the corner or is it the trees further down farmers that block the site distance?
I think, well, there's a couple, two overgrown junipers right at the end of his driveway. And I, I think that's the bulk of the issue. I think if, if they were removed or trimmed back, it would, it would improve the site distance immensely. It's not, it's not much that THP is asking for. It's just, it's, it's something that, you know, a good neighbor would have done a long time ago because right now all the, everybody at Hidden Meadows and everybody at the Stone Ridge Development, I mean, every, it, it gets a lot of use already and it's, it's a little bit of a issue. Luckily the, the farmers, it isn't high speed traffic or anything. But it, it can definitely be improved and it'd be nice if there was some cooperation there.
Yeah, Alex, there, I think some of the trees a little bit further down probably could use some trimming, but we'll have to investigate that. They might actually be in the right of way now. There might be some ability to compel those trees to be trimmed.
Well, I guess we'll wait and hear how your negotiations go.
Thanks.
Yeah. That's it on 16. Okay, 17. That's the waiver request we mentioned about the, the driveways closer than 60 feet to the intersection. 18 are, are stormwater issues. They are all, they're all will comply. I just wanted to mention 18C. Steve mentioned that it would be beneficial if we could connect into the storm sewer system for it out in front of the Hidden Meadows development. Unfortunately, the existing agreement between Precision and Hidden Meadows does not include that. So we will, we will try and get some kind of an agreement to do that. Otherwise, we, we would need to pipe the storm sewer across that triangular piece to an existing swale. And that would take care of 18. 19. Proposed landscaping. They are all will complies. Item 20. Let's see. Yeah, item 20 is the, has to do with the sewer system, which is, proposes a low pressure, a system that would be pumped out the private drive to an existing manhole just off of Lawn Avenue. Steve pointed out that the, the component A of the planning module that was submitted needs to be endorsed by the planning commission. Is that something that you can do tonight? Steve, is that something they can do?
I'm sorry, I had myself muted. We, we get touched on that after we get through everything, everything else.
Okay.
Yeah, it may be.
Okay, item 21, that's just will comply. That has to do with the water, water be provided by North Penn Water Authority. 22 has to do with streetlights. Basically, we propose streetlights at the Basically, we propose streetlights at the bends in the roads and the intersections and at the front face of the cul-de-sac. And just need some direction whether that's an acceptable extent of street lighting for the township.
I was suggesting two additional lights where the, the two entrances are on Hidden Meadows Drive. There, there isn't lights there now, is there?
I think there is one, it's not too far from the, the southern entrance. And I'll double check that. If, if there's not sufficient light, we will propose one there.
Okay, I, I was probably looking at, you know, if there was something right at the corner. So if it's in a little bit, that might work too. Did the planning commission have any?
You're saying you have lights at every intersection?
At each of the intersections and at the ninety degree bends in the road. And at the, at the, the island of the cul-de-sac, at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Oh, I know the other area I was looking at is that, that central spillover parking area.
Court A, that's what I was gonna ask about.
Okay.
Or Court C rather.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I, I could see putting something in that area for sure. You, you, you've got a lot of places to be walking in this development. I'm gonna keep it illuminated as, you know, that won't crazy, but safely illuminated for after, after dark foot traffic.
Any other suggested locations?
I don't have any for now. I didn't really pay too much attention to that one. I know other, a couple other cul-de-sac developments we've been, we've been looking at, we've required lamps at the end of the driveways, but you know, these were single homes, not the townhouses, you know, large, large parcel.
Bob, the only other thing I could think of, this is Alex, would be at the entrance where the emergency access ties back into Road A. But that might be able to be linked with getting some lighting at that end, at least of that Court C.
Yep, right. Anybody else?
Question for Dean, on your standard unit, do you install a light over the garage, like that the homeowner could put the light on, on their driveway?
We, we typically have a light right outside the garage doors. So I, we haven't finalized this design here yet, so I'm not clear if we're gonna have two, uh, single car garage doors, or if we're gonna have one larger garage door. If we go with two single car doors, we typically will go in between. If we go with one larger door, we'll go on either side or maybe up above.
All right, I'm just thinking, you know, in lieu of the driveway lamp posts that, that Chris had mentioned, if there's a light at the driveway, at least the individual homeowners could, could light their, their driveway if they wanted to.
Yeah, there would definitely be lighting at the garage.
Any other comments on lighting?
Now let's move forward. Okay, item twenty-three. That has to do with the notice that was sent to the joining property, well, any property owner within required distance was sent a certified letter advising them of this development. Item twenty-four. That's a will comply, there will be an MPDES permit required for this development. Item twenty-five, that's a will comply, it speaks to developer's agreement and an opinion of cost that will be provided at final plan. Twenty-six. That's the, the engineering and drafting details and we went through those and we're in agreement with if not all, most of, most of them. And twenty-seven, any additional comments? In, in addition, there were, we were provided with two neighbor comments if, if I should address them at this point.
I, I think before you get to that, Steve, what did you want to circle back to?
Oh, actually that could wait till, till the very end. The planning module, you know, component four A of the planning module, the typical form that you have to sign off on to say that general, the project is generally consistent with township ordinances. Just a cog in the wheel. It's not the final approval of the planning module, it's just your acknowledgement that you expect this is you know, a go project. Well, with respect to those comments, I think, I think Greg sent it to the planning commission members. I, I know I forwarded it on to Bob, but I believe at least one, if not more, of the residents that sent those comments are on the call tonight.
Correct.
Maybe they might want to get their, their comments directly.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. If, if you want to do that now, we can do that. So anyone that has, has comment on the, on the THP development, I know we had a couple of neighbors, why don't you go ahead and, and identify yourself and, and we'll let you make your comments, ask your questions.
Good, good evening. This is Brian Weisel. I'm here with my father, Will Weisel. Property is seven sixteen Lawn Avenue, been a resident there for fifty-five plus years. And we had a couple of questions that obviously you guys have, have received a copy of. Question number one. Behind units forty-one to forty-six, over the years and, and to this day, there continues to be quite a lot of water runoff after storms and during storms coming from the Grandview property across the property line. With the addition of that swale there now, we just want to be assured that, that swale that collects any of that water is mitigated in such a way that it doesn't cross the, I guess it would be the northeast corner of, of the Weisel property.
Yeah, if I, yeah, if I could answer that, Brian, the, the swell number one is going to be below the, the Weisel property. So it, it should not negatively affect your property at all. In fact, it will probably help, but instead of, of the water sheet flowing down through there, it will be conveyed in, within a swale, which, which should help. But we can certainly meet you out in the field there if you'd like. We can explain what we're proposing to do and you can let us know of any other concerns that you have. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's fine. There, there, over the years, there's been quite a bit of water that has run along the property line there then and down onto the property on, on the drive. And, and there's been a few things that have been done in the years to, to try to push that water, you know, away from, from the property. So yeah, I think that would probably be the best order of business here is to try to set up a timer, we can meet out on the property and and just show you what some of the concerns might be.
Okay, sounds good.
The second question I had, I think, I think you may have already somewhat answered this, but on some of the preliminary sketches that, that we were shown, there was some, some vegetation and some plantings and trees and bushes and so forth, creating somewhat of a buffer along the property line, especially between unit, or behind units twenty, or I'm sorry, thirty and forty, between that path that's now there and, and, and the, the property line there, I guess, to the, to the southeast. Is THP, I, I think I heard you earlier saying you were planning to do some plannings to, to provide somewhat of a buffer there because especially with that walking path there probably being used heavily, it would be nice to have some sort of buffer there between the, the development and, and our property.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. Steve pointed that out in his letter and we will be supplementing that buffer. And, and again, that's something we can talk about when we meet you out in the field.
Okay. The third question or the third item I'd like to just kind of get your, your thoughts on is what are the current provisions during construction? And then eventually when this gets turned over to the HOA, what, what provisions are going to be put in place for maintaining the, the twelve foot right of way? Which is pretty much behind units forty-one to forty-six that tie into that outer lane. And then the, the outer lane, the fifteen foot right of way that extends to Lawn Avenue. For, for as long as Precision Finishing has been here, they've maintained and cleared those, those right of ways, trees that would come down, they would clear them and take care of that. Maintenance of those, those right of ways, they would take care of. So I, I'd just like to hear what THP is planning, again, during the construction phase when obviously you have equipment on site and it would be easy for you to do such a thing, but then in future, is this, hopefully this is something that's written into the homeowner's agreement and, and, and gets, you know, put in there that, that there's always a guaranteed access to, to our property here.
Dean, have you given any thought to that maintenance? I'm sure it's going to be handled within the, within the condo documents. Especially because it's part of the emergency access. And throughout construction, that certainly, certainly can keep that clear.
Yeah, I mean, direct answer would be no. We haven't really had thought processes or, or discussion on that. We have access to whatever easement agreements have been written up. I think half of that easement is on our property and half of it not on our property. I think we would just have to have some future conversation on it in terms of what that would need to look like in terms of going into the HOA docs.
Yeah, I believe that the way the, the right of way is written up, that all property owners that come in contact with the, the right of way are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep. And, and for most of this, it would be Grandview and, and and this development, as you get farther out, maybe it's, it's relative to, to another property owner, but since again, as you mentioned, it is going to be a secondary emergency access to the, the community there. The, the outer part of the lane for sure would be something that I think you'd want to keep clear.
Yeah, this is, this is Steve. I, I know I, I put a mention of it in, in one of the earlier comments. Probably didn't highlight that part to it, but I think from the township's point of view, as you just indicated, with it being emergency access, they're gonna want a guarantee that the onsite and quote unquote offsite emergency access lane is maintained even in winter weather conditions. So it's always a passable access.
Yeah, this is good again. I, I would have anticipated that would have not been any part of the question. I was referring to simply where the emergency access would, from our property heading out to Lawn Avenue would end up there in that easement area and then head back to the Weisel property. Direct answer was we had not given that consideration here from our standpoint yet.
Okay. All right, well, if, if you could keep us in the loop on, on what the, the intention is there, we, we would appreciate that. And like I said, I, I know during the construction phase, it's not going to be as, as big of a concern. It's, it's more long term when the, the, the community takes over ownership of that and, and making sure that it's written into their you know, ownership documents to, to maintain that.
Yeah, understood. We, we will look into what, what's currently written and then respond from there.
Okay, very good. One other question was relative to a conversation I had with THP once before, that you talked about this being kind of a phased approach when, when construction starts and we assume that you'll do all the land clearing and, and most of the major underground work and, and, and site work would be done upfront. But is, is that still the plan that as far as building the, the actual units themselves, that is that still going to be a phased approach? Do you have any idea at this point?
Yeah, a- at this point, there's, there's two phases proposed. Essentially, I guess the, the inner loop would be the first phase and then the going out to the cul-de-sac would be a second phase. But that, that hasn't been ironed out yet. A lot of times market conditions will drive that.
Okay. One, one other question relative to that path behind the units twenty-nine to, to forty, the emergency access McAdam walkway, with it being fifteen feet wide. Just, just a question whether or not one of those collapsible bollards on each end is, is sufficient ensuring that there's not going to be any kind of vehicle traffic on, on there, somebody taking a shortcut through there, anything like that.
Yeah, the, the collapsible bollards are what we typically provide and I, I've not been aware of any issues with cars going around. That, that essentially uses seven, seven feet for a car to get around. We, we could provide a chain across, but it's also meant for pedestrian access. So the bollards tend to work better for that. There's less obstruction to pedestrians and they tend to work pretty well for keeping vehicles out. And other than emergency situations, I don't know why a car would go there.
Okay. That's all I had. I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns tonight.
My number should be on the plan.
Sorry for interrupting there, Bob. I was just thinking with that, the issue of whether a car could drive around a ball or maybe when you do look at your landscaping plan, some well-placed shrubs or something near that entrance would keep, you know, prevent the ability to drive around it because there'd be another obstruction off the, off the path.
Will do.
All right, Brian, thank you. Do we have anyone else who wanted to make comment on this project? All right. Well, seeing none, why don't we move on? Is there anything else we needed to touch on here, Steve?
No, I think we hit major items.
All right, well, it seems like you got some direction here, Bob.
As we did, thank you. If, if you could talk about the planning module, Steve. Get that moving.
Yeah, I believe I, it was attached to, I didn't know if my mic was on or not. Attached to the review letter. We haven't done too many of these lately because there hasn't been a lot of development in attachment. So some of the newer members might not have seen this form before. But whenever there's a new development, the issue of sewage planning, which is sort of the, the bigger picture of whether, how the, how the site is served with sewer, public sewer or private sewer, and that, that overview has to be approved by Department of Environmental Protection. And it has to be consistent with what the Township's Act five thirty-seven plan or, or overall sewage facilities plan is. These issues become very simple when it's public sewer because that is the highest and best environmentally sound way to treat sewer, at least the way DEP thinks. So in the planning process, you as the Township Planning Commission, plus the Bucks County Planning Commission and the Bucks County Health Department are asked, is, is the project proposed generally consistent with township ordinances? And is the sewage, the method of sewage disposal selected consistent with the township? Overall plan. And in this case, it's, you know, I believe all the answers are yes, so. uh, what we've done in the past is Chris has authorized our office to 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 fill out the questionnaire. Does it still require an actual signature of the planning commission? I think they changed the form a little bit.
I think they did, but I think there still is some sign off on it.
Uh, yeah, it is on the back on page 17, so. Uh, if if the planning commission is so inclined to authorize me to fill this out, I'll I'll get it to Chris for his signature and and then pass it along. This is not the end of the whole planning module process. It's one cog in the process, and it ultimately has to come back to the Board of Supervisors for final approval. As usually ends up as one of the conditions of the of the plan approval, but this is just the step one. But the bottom line is you're acknowledging it's public sewer. It's public sewer called for in the Act 537 Plan, and the plan as proposed is generally consistent with township ordinances.
Did I hear mentioned before that there's a pump involved with the sewage for this facility?
Uh, yeah, there's a pump for each building. It's a low pressure system. And there'd be a leader system coming out of each of the units to a single pump serving each cluster. And then there's a there is a low pressure sewer force main that would go out. Uh, actually, it would go out that emergency access and then out the private drive to Lawn Avenue where there's an existing manhole, and it would discharge into that existing manhole.
Bob, is there the sewer out in Farmer's Lane slash Lawn Avenue is not deep enough to bring it all the way back here, gravity, correct?
Correct, correct.
Department building next door has a pump that serves the Hidden Meadows facility.
So how how big are the holding tanks for each one of these buildings?
I I don't have that off the top of my head. Ultimately, it's the sewer authority that'll decide what's adequate for those tanks. Let me see if I could find it quick.
Bob, is there any stipulation for emergency power for those? I know it's a duplex system, but
My next question. Uh, I am not aware. You're talking about a generator.
Right, something to to ensure that if the power goes out, the sewage continues to flow.
Yeah, that I do not know. Dean, Dean, are you aware of any backup generator?
Yeah, we, um, we, myself, I had addressed that with Specialty Supply, who's the uh, intermediary that we're dealing with. E1 is the actual system. So we don't have the finalized system designed here yet. What we do have is which I'm scrambling for here as well is tank size. There are duplex pumps, so each tank would have two pumps in it. They're not a large holding capacity, and I'm trying to find what that is, but in terms of to your question about electric, there was the capability of connecting outside electricity through the uh, control box, I believe, which was on each one. Or there was other capabilities if you wanted to go in with some kind of an underground or above ground, whatever, generator type system. We were looking at it from a from a possibility is of of whether there was a power outage in terms of being to be able to provide electric to it from the outside in the case of a like a portable generator.
So you're still investigating that, that's what you're saying, correct?
Yeah, we are. We have, we have enough information. Sellersville Borough, the receiving authority, has at least one, if not two of these systems currently within their municipality or we're heading down to their treatment plant. They are comfortable with it. We had touched base with them right out of the gate, and obviously, they haven't had issues with them. And they're very familiar with the brand that we have selected as well, and we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, we actually have them serving, well, one of your old, old developments over in Providence, Providence 1, the bottom end of Providence 1 way in the back. Part of that development served with individual grinder pumps. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a significant problem with that, but that's on the Telford system.
Just maybe the next ice storm or hurricane that knocks out power for a week.
Yeah, no, I understand the concern.
The, uh, the the schematics here that I'm looking at are showing 150 gallon capacity.
I just found it too. I opened to a page and there it was. And yeah, part of the issue is they don't want to have a lot of capacity because what works against you on these small systems is having it sit out there in your lawn. Uh, you don't want it to go septic. You want to get that tank pumped down.
Right.
So they don't make them particularly large storage capacities. I'll certainly raise the question with Sellersville also, what their thoughts are on emergency power for these types of systems.
Thank you.
All right, so what do you need from us for the planning module?
Uh, I would just need a motion for me to complete the planning module and for the chairman to sign component four A.
All right, I'll make said motion.
I'll second that, Alex.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Proposed. Motion carries. Okay. Bob, you have anything else?
Um, no, but just, uh, to recap, the the issue in our mind is item number two. And and we would like to meet with staff to iron that out before we come back to see you guys.
Good.
Is that is that doable, Steve?
Yeah, I think to make a request through the manager and we'll work something out.
Okay. All right, very good. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you. All right. I lost my agenda, yeah. Too many papers tonight. All right, so next on the agenda is old business. I have none. Anyone have any old business?
This is Alex, I don't.
What's that?
I said, this is Alex, I don't.
Okay. All right, sounds like we have no old business. How about new business? I don't have any new business either. Is there anything in the update we need to address?
I don't think we do. Haven't heard from Tim Snyder lately, so I don't know what he's doing or not doing. Yeah, Energy Mountain told me they were going to try to talk to adjoining property owners before they came back to the township, so that's haven't heard any more there either.
Steve, did they have the zoning hearing? Leading?
For Energy Mountain?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No, they did not make that application. I said they they wanted to, um, at least what they told me is they wanted to reach out to adjoining property owners and talk to them more before they pursued anything with the township.
Okay.
We got anything else coming in?
There's a little, actually, we did just receive a another select properties three lot subdivision on Ridge Road. Just up from from the Wamboldt property. It's one of those on on one, on the the lower side of Ridge Road, there's existing property and these subdividing into three lots. I really even haven't had a chance to start looking at that one yet. That's the only one that we have in-house. But we'll have that next month.
All right, well, let's move on to public comment. Is there anyone out there yet that wants to make public comment? All right, hearing none. I guess I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll give that to John.
I'll second it.
All right, Tim, I think all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. What's left on?
All right, guys.